Everyone, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. First off, I'd like to introduce our two new commissioners. Barb Knott is here and Clay Newton is here. And we look forward to getting your input on these issues. So first off, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I still move.
A second. Call the row.
Commissioner Burke?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Knott?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, tonight, we're going to be electing a chairperson and vice chairperson. Is there a motion for selection of chairperson?
I have one.
Is there a second?
I'm nominating someone else?
Okay.
Yes, I'm nominating Darrell as the chair and the vice chair.
Are there other people that would like to throw their name into the hat for chair or vice chair?
No, thank you.
Okay, then call the row.
Commissioner Burke?
Sure.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Knott?
Yes.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the December 27 meeting?
No.
Nope.
No.
I have a few suggestions. Okay. Mostly grammatical, I guess, or graphical. On page two, there are several sentences where there's either extra words or no words or something. So about midway down under information items, the paragraph starts out with the chair. Lundy said he would be happy. And it says, you know, there's an extra chair in here someplace.
At the end of the sentence?
The next sentence.
End of the first sentence.
Yeah. And then the next paragraph, there's a second she, which should be deleted. And then in the third sentence of that, she said, no, I don't think so. She feels maybe, as though he was...
She feels, she said she feels. That's the second sentence.
Okay, yeah, okay. Page three, the third paragraph, in the first sentence, is at odds at, I think probably with, maybe be sensible there.
And the contents of the letter, the last sentence in that paragraph, why is it started by the contents of the letter? I guess it could be a little...
It could be either, I guess. Any other corrections?
So is that last one a correction, a turn of contents, or leave it as is?
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
So leave it as is?
It's fine.
And I would put on page three, the one, two, three, four, five, sixth paragraph down, Kerr said she understands, but asked the planning commission if they felt this letter impacts unanimous decision. This out there is not modifying, so it's just this letter. You see what I'm saying? Yeah, it makes it clear.
Yep. Okay, any other corrections? All right, I have a motion to approve the minutes as stated.
I move.
My second.
Call the row.
Commissioner Burke?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Knott?
Can we vote if we weren't on the commission? For approving the minutes?
I would abstain.
Yeah.
Abstaining.
Yeah.
Chair Johnson?
Yes. This is a quasi-judicial hearing regarding a public hearing consideration of SR 18-07, request by Vito Sorelli for a setback reduction to allow the construction of a new single-family residence on Ash Street off Seventh and Eighth Street. The applicant, Vito Sorelli, on behalf of the property owners, requesting a setback reduction to permit plus eight feet front yard setback in conjunction with the construction of a new single-family residence. The property is located on Ash Street off Seventh and Eighth Street, tax lot 5604, map 51019AA, and is in a residential lower-density zone. The property is owned by Jacqueline Bennett, municipal code Section 17 dot 12 dot 04OB standards, request for a minimum 15-foot front yard setback. Request will be reviewed against municipal code Section 17 dot 64 dot 010, setback reduction request. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any commissioner believe he or she has a conflict of interest or personal bias?
I don't believe I have a personal bias, but I do own a home in the notification area.
Say that again.
My home is in the notification area.
Okay.
So I got notice of this application. Again, I don't think I have a bias, but I do own a...
Yeah, okay. Chair.
Sorry, should have done that before the meeting. I apologize for that. But in talking with Jeff earlier today, thought, given that we've got two new members on the planning commission, that it might be worth taking a few minutes to kind of talk through the bias, conflict of interest, and other things you need to worry about it. So if I could just take two minutes and help...
Thank you for my benefit coming to work here.
Yeah. So anytime you make a decision, the three things to worry about are ex-party contacts, bias, and conflict of interest. That's in a quasi-judicial decision like this one, where we're saying of one particular house or one particular small area. When we get to legislative, and we've got two more of those later, on legislative decisions, you don't worry about bias or ex-party contacts. You're expected to be out in the community, you're expected to bring your biases in as you set policies for the city. So in that, you only worry about conflict of interest when you're dealing with legislative decisions. So let's go back to bias, conflict of interest, and ex-party contacts. Ex-party contacts isn't the issue here, but just briefly talk about it, that's if you talk to someone outside of here or have some information that you're going to base your decision on that's not disclosed to the participants. The idea is that you're a judge and you should, you're acting as a judge and you should be basing your decision only on the evidence at the hearing and the criteria. And so if you have an ex-party contact, or if you're making a decision based on evidence that didn't come out at the hearing, that's not necessarily a problem. You just need to disclose it so that the other people, the parties involved, can either rebut that or know what you know so they know how to address you. So this isn't an ex-party contact that we're talking about unless there's a site visitor, unless Commissioner Newton went and talked to somebody, and we can deal with that if we have to. This sounds more like a conflict of interest situation where in Oregon, the laws are pretty straightforward. The two questions you have to ask is, could the decision you're about to make affect you or your family members or your business, either beneficially or detrimentally? If, you know, it could have caused you to lose or gain money, or your property values to go up or down. If it could, we don't know, but it could, then you're required to announce a conflict and you can still participate. If it would, if this would definitely get you, you know, make a difference in your property value, say you applied for this permit, or, you know, your wife's father applied for a permit, then that would definitely affect the property values. And in that situation, declare the conflict and you step down and can't participate. So, you know, that can get kind of dicey at some points, and so we can deal with those when they come up. It's really fact-based. The other issue that might be an issue is a bias. You know, this is happening in my neighborhood, and I really think that property ought to be preserved in public, and I can't prove any development on there. Then you're biased. You have already made your decision in advance. And for a quasi-judicial situation, if you're biased and you can't base it solely on the criteria and the evidence in front of you, you've got to recuse yourself. So with that, I think the answer is that, you know, you're facing, at best, a potential conflict of interest in that it could affect you, depending on how close you're located to it and, you know, what's going on. And in an abundance caution, even if it, it's, you know, pretty far away, it's not going to affect that much to announce it and say, I'm within, you know, the notice area, you know, where we live half mile away, you know, not half mile, a couple hundred feet away, but I don't think it's going to affect me and disclose, and you should be able to participate.
Okay. I'm not really sure if I finished this, but has the commissioner had an ex-party contact or made a site visit?
Site visit.
Site visit.
Site visit.
Site visit.
Okay. Is there a staff report?
Yes, and one of the things I wanted to point out, there were some public comments. I hope you each got that and have an opportunity to look through that. If you need a few moments to do that, we can do that now. Also, there should be a few copies that we made out here. Would you all like a few minutes to read through these? You're okay to go?
I'll just...
Okay. Well, and so to move into the staff report, a little background here that I pointed out is that it's mentioned that the subject property consists of two tax lots, 50 by 100, for approximately 10,000 square feet. The applicant is seeking an eight-foot setback reduction in the front yard setback. It's mentioned a couple times in, I think, the GEO Hazard Report regarding a proposed two-lot residential division project. And I'll let the applicant speak to that because we didn't really get that prior to my doing or having a conversation with him about that. So I'll let him talk to you about that. But that is not part of this, any kind of partition or subdivision. This is just for the setback reduction. I've stated in the staff report that due to the steepness of the slopes, approximately 47 percent, 43 percent, according to the county's, city's GIS, on these lots and the square footage requirements for a billable lot, the property is limited to one dwelling, of which plans were submitted back in 1992, but never permitted or processed. And then the GEO Tech provides, states it is proposed for two lots and makes repeated references to multiple structures, as if this were a subdivision application, but like I just said, it's not. This is a setback reduction application only. And so as far as what the standards that I point out, and just like this will be a new experience for a couple of the board members, it's also a new experience we're working with clients or applicants in the public process. So, you know, I did have a follow-up conversation with Vito on this, and so he's going to present some new material, I believe. But, you know, the things that we, you guys judge this one, are these setback standards. And as I stated in a couple situations regarding significant views of the oceans, that's what these standards are built on. 8.3 says the proposed building location will not interfere with solar access. We just did not have materials that I could make any kind of finding on that. That's what led pretty much to my recommendation of denial. One thing I did want to point out, though, and some of the things that were brought up in some of the public comments as well, and the applicant can also speak to anything on this, is that the city has no intention of extending the right-of-way south to north. In other words, this will not be a road or will not access from the south, these lots. I spoke with Public Works, there's plenty of, you know, there's plenty of, utilities are already there, everything is there for construction, but access is the one concern. And, you know, pulling the historic records on those northern properties, those are accessed from above, from the north. And if you, many of you did the site visitor, you know this area, it's mountain goat territory and it's difficult access, and the city has no intention of opening that up as a through street. You know, I spoke with Public Works about this, and that's not part of the setback reduction, you know, discussion. But if they were to build here, I think two of the lots up north have an easement coming in off of the northern access, and so some arrangement would have to be made for access to build on this.
So if this property were developed, they would have to enter it from the north side or from the south side?
That is from the north, from my discussions with Public Works.
I see.
Yeah.
Unless they got an easement, like...
Of some sort, yeah. I don't know. I don't know how else that they could propose, but we don't have anything showing anything. So I just had the discussion with Public Works if they had any issues with this, and they said that, you know, really access is your only issue from their perspective.
The width of the street that's on Ash there where this property is, is that standard right-of-way width?
From my understanding and what I've read from the materials, no, that's not to city standards, it's to a driveway kind of access.
Jeff could use... If it's a public right-of-way, why is there an easement? I don't understand what's going on.
I have that document and I can make copies of it. It is just an, I couldn't, because I don't have really the real document. I'm trying to make sense of where it's coming off of another access is why. And so it's from off of that, is that north Ash that's up there on the north that comes right off of Ecola?
Oh, up on top, that's...
Yeah. And so there's kind of a driveway access off of that, so there's, I think, a second...
Oh, I see. Maybe a small portion where you have to cross.
Somebody else.
Privates.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's an agreement between, and it's in our history by location, if you go out on the website, and I can copy this up for you guys, filey development project, it's between Sweet Wilkes, Philly, Larish, and those are the parties involved in the...
Has the fire department given any opinion on access down there?
I got, I didn't get any response from them, so... But they have, you know, they, like I said, most of these areas back here, we really have not, or I haven't seen pushback or anything from the fire department on these. They usually will service these if they can get proper access agreements.
You know, I realize this probably is, we're looking at a map that may or may not be to scale, and it's certainly when you're out there, it's really tough to tell where the right-of-way is and where it is in the front yard. But as I look at the outlines of what I presume are the lots themselves, and I look at where some of these houses are located, it looks like they're pretty near their front yard setback.
They are. The one, the one just north has an 8.5-foot front yard setback reduction, and the one above that, I think, is a 5-foot setback reduction. I think that's mentioned in one of the public comment letters, that those were for, you know, streams or other concerns, but...
Those were setback because of the stream that runs down that valley?
Pushed forward because of that. That was the argument made at that time.
That was the argument made at that time also. Well, it, I guess...
And that picture back in the staff report, the street view is from that kind of northern boundary of the property corners of the two lots looking back down the hill south.
So any other questions for staff? And there was additional correspondence which we have. The pertinent criteria to be considered or noted in the staff report and listed on the criteria sheet next to the west door, testimony, argument, and evidence must be directed towards that criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or municipal code which the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Value to raise an issue accompanied by a statement or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-makers and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes the appeal based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional testimony, argument, evidence regarding the application. The planning commission shall grant such a request by continuing the public hearing and leaving a record open for additional testimony, argument, or evidence. Persons who shall be receiving recognition from the chair shall state their full name and mailing address, and if appearing in a representative capacity, identify who they represent. Is there a presentation by the applicant?
Vito Sorelli, 31897 Maxwell Lane, Furch, Oregon 9712. I'll pass out. So this is additional, yes, sorry, this is additional information with existing site conditions as well as some photographs of the site. I'd like to start off just by following Jeff's introduction. There is a little bit of confusion with the geological hazard reports because those reports were done prior with the property owner as well as the realtors when there was discussion on their end that there could be two tax lots. But since working with, at the time, Mark Barnes and then Jeff, we found out that this tax, these tax lots would only serve one residential lot. So that's where the confusion is with the applications and I guess some of the comments surrounding property owners. So that, this application is for an eight-foot setback off the front, the west side of the property, but it is for a single-family building on these two tax lots. So the first page, what I've listed is, taking it off of Hoover Earth and the county maps, showing the subject property tax lot as well as the neighboring properties to the north that each have approximately an eight to a five-foot setback reduction on the west. Meeting with the geological engineer as well as Michael McEwen, who did a lot of the work on these lots, as well as the road improvement, we reviewed the site and the site bank. So on the first page, the light dash line represents the edge of the bank where the slope drops in about a 45-degree angle down to the creek below. And I think there's comments from the neighbors of their setbacks were granted due to this creek and this slope. So as you can see, the slope runs along the east side of the two neighboring properties to the north and then cuts through our subject, Jacqueline Bennett's lot on that corner quarter, so this upper northwest edge of the lot. If you flip to page two, it's an enlarged image showing the topography that we had surveyor complete. So I dashed the top edge of the bank and shaded where it becomes the 45-degree slope. So as you can see, I mapped in an approximate 24 by 40-foot building footprint on the edge of the slope. This shows this site parameters with an eight-foot setback. And as you can see, it's in a similar relationship to the house directly to the north of it. How the slope crosses the site, it even reduces the distance of the house in the east-west manner. So there's initial eight foot to the house to the north due to how the slope relates to the site. This third page created is, relates to the site view lines, and there's an image on the back of the packet. So we walked aside and took a lot of site photos of the existing slopes, and you'll see them in the additional packet. But the neighboring property in the north has a deck balcony on their second story looking to the subject lot. But from that balcony and taking photos on the corner of the property, they have good ocean views, and I've dashed in what the approximate view angle would be out towards the ocean. And on the last page's packet, it shows that there's still a substantial ocean view from their deck. So we didn't feel that the impact of this eight-foot setback reduction would be a substantial impact on their view towards the ocean. The remaining pictures are just to show, as mentioned in the initial staff report, the existing road and the relationship of the street to the existing houses, and how what we're requesting is to relate and correspond to the site parameters and what the existing conditions are on the site. So this house would have a similar, this subject property, once the house is designed, would have a similar relationship to the front yard setback, as well as the away from the bank and the creek below, per the recommendation of the GEO Tech, as well as meeting with the excavator, Michael McEwen, on-site. I think those are the most, most of the information that I've gathered and added to this initial work. But the main points would be the slope staying away from the edge of the bank, the creek, as well as matching the existing. We really wanted to maintain that same right west setback that the neighboring properties along Ash Street have currently. Yep?
Mr. Sorelli, you're a great experienced developer, and I'm just curious, why would you turn in an application like the one we got and think it was okay to present all the material that should have been in that application at this meeting?
At the time, it was a transition with Mark Barnes, and we had reviewed and had a lot of meetings about this project, and we reviewed the site. We were up on-site, we reviewed with Public Works. And due to the slope and the report from CKI that shows the site map and the severity of the 45-degree slope, it was brought up to us and Jacqueline Bennett that that would be enough information showing that the hazard of building on the slope would be enough to promote the approval of the setback reduction. So this has been going on for months now.
But there's no comments. I mean, there were no, we couldn't get any comments ahead of time in our information because people couldn't, I mean, they didn't know, they didn't think about, you know, the sidelines and disturbing their views and solar access. All of that stuff isn't in here because it wasn't presented ahead of time. So no neighbors are allowed to make any meaningful comments because they didn't have the information.
So this, on this map here, is this the proposed layout for the new house?
It's the bridge map.
Where, I'm looking at this. This, is this, what's this?
Correct, that would be the building site for the new proposed house.
So then if you were to build further south where the slope is, does that 40, 45-degree angle, does that not permit you to build, would you have to have more land in order to build on it?
No, so the slope, the slope of the road, Ash Street, does taper down, as you're seeing from north to south.
Right.
Her, meeting Michael McEwen and as well as GEO Tech, the severity of the slope from the center half of lot to the east is where it's questionable or damaging to build on that hillside, similar to... is where it's questionable or damaging to build on that hillside similar to the houses uphill. So, that would be the threshold, is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to get, trying to figure out why a person couldn't build further south. What's the restriction from going further, further south?
Going further south is, we're not asking for a setback on the north, we're asking a setback on the west. So, yes, the building placement could be placed further south, but it's, we can have a five foot setback on the north side of the property. And as far as like the orientation of the building on the north, the south setback line, yes, we could slide the house further to the south.
But if you were to move this this way?
That's where the edge of the bank is.
Yes.
And that's where it drops at a forty-five degree slope. And it was recommended by the Geotech as well as the excavator to stay away from that slope. And so, that's similar to, similar to my first page where it shows that the two houses are aligning with that edge of the bank and not building over the, over the bank.
And Vito, just for clarification for everyone, if you were to go fifteen feet, that really limits that depth of that, what, just?
The house, that house over there shown in the package is only twenty, twenty-four feet, so it'd be reduced another seven feet.
Yeah.
So, it'd be a narrow fifteen foot home.
Right, that's what I was trying to point out.
How many square feet is this house to me?
She wants to build a couple thousand square foot, probably two to three bedroom, this permanent residence, single family residence.
Two-story?
Two-story.
And does the creek run at all on this property or?
The creek is, it's down below, so it's hard to tell the exact location of the creek, but it does clip the corner slightly according to the survey. So, on page one and page two, on page two it states the creek, or page three. The creek, you can see, clips the corner. And then it gets closer to the neighboring properties to the north as the creek is uphill.
And just for clarification, as we're looking at this tightly hatched, yeah, that represents changes in the topography?
Changes in the topography. And that's where it's a one-to-one, a forty-five degree slope at that edge of the line where the hatch pattern gets very dense. And Mike, I believe, I don't know if it was the neighboring house, McEwen, the house to the north, if not both of them did work. And it was the same recommendations as you can see in some of the responses from the neighbors that their approvals and their setback reductions were due to this similar case that Jack Bennett's dealing with on their property.
Well, I thought that it was the creek.
Well, the creek and the bank, it's a similar, they're not, the creek isn't on their property. It sits, it sits below, it's the bank that would be a challenge for their site. You can see the creek. On page two, you can see the creek dashed in and the relationship to their house. And it's in a similar manner as the subject property.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
Did you measure the distance from the required, the prescribed location of the house to the creek?
The total distance of the lot is a hundred feet deep from west to east. So, I would say it's approximately seventy-five feet from the back of the house to the creek. Similar to the other houses to the north, it's approximately fifty to seventy-five feet as well.
I don't know this off the cuff, but I do know that there are setback requirements off the creek each other.
Yes, and this meets that.
It meets that with the basis?
Correct. And it varies from site to site with the slope and the topography of what is?
What you're proposing means that what, what, if you built it according to the code?
It would still meet.
Okay, thank you. Are there other presentations by proponents? Are there any presentations by opponents?
Don Stasney?
Go ahead and use the podium. Address your name and address, mailing address.
Don Stasney. We own the property at seven five five North Ash.
Your mailing address?
Our mailing address is 2309 Southwest First Avenue, number 1145, 404.
Proceed, yeah. You can go, whichever way you want to present it.
As I would say to this architect, sort of the no information other than the first application that's come to anyone in the neighborhood will be able to react to. What I have here is our application, which was done in the year 2000 when we built the property, built our house. And to show you the kind of information that we were producing at that particular point to make the case for our settlement. First of all, on this, as well as the materials submitted, we had sections here that showed the geological basis that we were dealing with as to earth or rock where there was bearing and where the creek had blocked. And a little bit of history where this place is, the lots, the subject lots as well as ours as well as mine above, this was an old rock course at one point. And there is a bench that kind of goes around the base of the subject properties, which was an old road, logging road that kind of went through the area. So, the difference in configuration that the line rods we have in this particular area is the creek runs through the back part of our property. And because the slope is so great going down through there, we could only use about half of our progress. And as you come down through here, the creek swings out. And I haven't seen this document, so I don't know what that says. But there is a, you know, a scarpet kind of going through, and there's a bench down below and another scarpet down at the edge of the creek. So, there is kind of a step that goes down to the creek itself. This is the sheer one that we were dealing with here and here. So, the coming down to the corner of the subject properties where the creek swings in, the creek itself is actually in the rear yard setback. It doesn't really affect the land that much, or his, his scarpet going through. Read the geological report, which didn't deal with this development per se, but said, we're looking to see if we could build two houses on this property and go subduing through it. What that geological report says is that the entire site is built, it's a matter of cost as to where you can do it. But you aren't in this area like we were, but we cannot go any closer because of the problem going down. We also developed as part of our initial application, the house plan, so we knew what was going to be built there and how they're going to do it. We also developed a sectional diagram going down through the street itself. Showed the line rod property where we were proposing to build, so we were able to establish heights going through the area as to the required view corridors that are going to be in that area. Now, what I did do, I will share this with you too. Because of this area of what we are dealing with, this area was rezoned about, I think, early seventies. And there are two lots, ours and one across the street, which were fifty by a hundred foot lots. All the others went into the, and that was a block, a block issue. So, again, our property and the setbacks we had, we didn't have any leeway going one way or another. When we adopted, we had a twenty by forty foot building site, a fifty by a hundred foot lot to actually build on. Now, line rods, the northern one, you refer to this, that's an existing house up here. And they have the same kind of issue because the bank comes closer and closer to this and it gets steeper and steeper and deeper into that area. We have a bank, basically the bank starts about three feet, five, two or five feet, something like that behind our house going down. So, that pushed us toward the front. We have the setback, the view of, says the part of it, so if you notice the shape of the house itself, the setback is there down this corner, our view corner, we actually go back to the original setback. So, we only used twenty feet of the overall setback to put any kind of building or anything. I took the site and I would say in my, in my letter, if you grant the setback up, basically you're adding ten percent to the land of the property. And it is, it does not, where, if you build right to the corner where the setbacks are, it is, it's a beauty. It's very, very definitely good because of the height when the building gets itself. Now, in this particular piece, this particular property up in this area, the footprint of the house is very important. You know where that is on the front because if you see up in this area, what I did was suggest if there was a fifty by twenty foot building pad within the, or against, against the property setback. And then I took their survey and I took the corners, the way we use things here, can be, it's a cycle, having to make the rectangle out of it and take the corner elevations and averages those. That then gives me to an average of one sixty-six. And if you add the twenty-four feet of that, then that means the maximum height of the building is one ninety. Now, that's the only way that you can really look at what the view thing is, is you need to know where the, what the house is, where the residence is going to be proposed. So, you're able to do this calculation to really see how high the specific is. In this particular location, if you're looking out from our, our house and the first, the second, the fourth course that was a part of that, that would mean that the top of the roof, or their maximum in that location would be right about at our sight line going, going out. I would also say that it says protect the ocean views. Well, the, I think for the part of the, from the sand beach, as the site is going, as the road is coming down this way, the view into the creek is absolutely quite wonderful. And it's into a forest kind of situation. The view down to the south of the hills comes down there is wonderful as well. As well as we're blocked back from the ocean or from Oak Street. So, there are views of the ocean through that area that we have. But it is much more of a panoramic kind of view that is available in that particular area. If we do the calculation on this particular one, like I said, the bottom, this hatch piece and here really would be at the one ninety level, which will allow that a part of your, not be impeded, especially with the mountains and hills to the other end. You will also notice that the spacing between houses up there is quite ample. Mark and Lawrence, the bare house up higher, gave a good amount of space between us, even though we were jammed right against our setback line. In the case here, if you come in and you put a house right at the setback line on this side, that's going to be ten feet away from our house. It also means that it's going to be higher and it's going to block our view, no question. But it kind of ruins the whole effect of the neighborhood going through. And that, that kind of buildings within the landscape as opposed to what we have in the residential area or is, you know, lot, 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 with a level kind of situation, a different kind of environment up there. So, the spaces in between become very important as far as landscaping and most things. Now, the last point I think I would make would be is that the tree itself, in the application, it says they are trying to stay through the street. If you go out and measure that screw street, it is thirty, thirty-eight inches with a hammer. If you take your, your current tree protection ordinance that you're considering, the tree protection zone, that means then that you have seventy-one feet radius circle around there, which essentially means that if you take care of the tree, tree ordinance, or that, the, what did I say?
The zone?
Tree protection.
Retaining of the tree.
Protection zone.
Pardon?
Tree protection zone.
It essentially kind of discourages the ability to develop a lot. You go back to the drip lot, I measured that this afternoon, and that's about twenty-five feet, maybe something, something like that. Or you could, I believe, make an argument for it. In any case, the big spruce tree that is right in the middle of this property probably negates any real meaningful development on the site. So, I would suggest that the owner go and apply for, for a tree removal permit with a site plan and a building plan that says this is what we're going to do if we do that. And go through the process of removal of the tree itself, extend over the whole site. Then I would also go back and say, we know the geology of this area. The reason we know the geology of this area is that we know that the northern tax lot is very much the geology that we were dealing with. So, it was leveled off and scraped off. We know the lower tax lot has some fill over that because we put it there. And with the permission of the owner, we took a lot of our excavation and moved down into that area to increase the height down before the other scarpet. So, that's the reason when they go on the dig, McEwen digs, he's actually gone through unengineered fills and get down to areas where there is areas that could be built on. The other thing I would say as far as the structural capacity of this particular property in here, the geological report deals with taking care of deadlines of the building itself and how do you bound it to the foundation. That isn't the controlling force up in this area. We had to design for a hundred and twenty mile comfort because of the winds coming up, up through this area. So, under our house, there are two blocks part of the creek. They are three feet, six inches deep, like fourteen wide, like eighteen feet long. And they're on both ends of it, so that we can then tie our building down, or our house down, take fairly up. There was nothing in the geological report that said that that, that he would take that. that into consideration. And there was nothing that said that you couldn't get foundations in there in one way or another that would make it, make it work. Um, we have, uh, fifty-four letters, or three letters, yep, I'm not sure, in there from neighbors. Uh, and again, uh, this is that we don't want to cooperate, we don't want to be a good neighbor, but we just need more information to, uh, make this thing work. The last thing I would say is we, we disagree completely with Public Works because we don't think Public Works truly looked at the access issue in a meaningful way. And it makes a lot more sense if you go out and you look at that site, you come up from the south at the end of that and use the bench that's in that area for staking, uh, for construction staking, but also getting up in there. In that particular case, the driveway, this geological, the driveway standard is very similar to what's going in up on the north end of Ash Street going up to the new house up in there. If you come through, this is the end of Ash, uh, currently, allowing us to get into our garage and, and, uh, burkas across the way, get into theirs, that means you're going to have a driveway that's going, you know, hundred, a hundred feet or something like that, right down through this, uh, area that we have now established between that area that is a neighborhood, uh, a gateway through that area. So we would, the neighbors would very much challenge any kind of access coming into that property from the north. It would, we think it's much better to come in from the south with a single driveway coming up through. I think that's all I have to say. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other opponents? Is there a staff response?
Um, do you go to the, uh, I don't know, do you go to the applicant first?
Yeah, the applicant has an opportunity to rebut.
Okay.
I'd like to just follow up on a couple points. I think a lot of the information that's provided is very helpful and beneficial from not only their tax lot and showing the, the reasons for approvals of their setbacks, but as well as a similar condition as what Jack Bennett and the subject lot is going through. Um, as mentioned, the creek on the subject property to the north is within the setback of fifteen foot, so it's out of the building zone. The main parameter for vote that houses to the north was not due to the creek, but due to the slope of the grade leading down the creek. So as you can see on the page I submitted, this heavily dashed line that represents the bank and the, the start of the forty-five degree slope, that's the three foot that the neigh, that the neighbor was just mentioning and the reason why the house was situated in the location where, where it is with its setback, um, due to the severity of this, of this edge and the forty-five degree slope. So in our application, we're trying to continue with this typology of the site and the, and the access on the road and place the house where it's not interfering with the bank or the slope. Uh, as far as the tree, we would like to preserve the tree. We've dealt with the tree before. I know there's some code related to the raises and tree protection zones, but, um, in reality, when we work with lots in any project in Cannon Beach, we get a professional arborist and they pro for the roots to see what the orientation is and see if the tree can be preserved. That's the number one goal is to keep the trees, um, on the site. And if that recommendation was to be removed, then we'd have to look that into consideration. Um, but the biggest thing is, it's not the creek, but just the edge of this line that I've represented. And that is where McEwen, uh, the excavator, as well as the Geotech, as well as the previous applications, that's the fine line that is dictating the driving force of the location of the setbacks of these houses. The creek is what is creating that slope and that drain, that drain holding through all of these tax lots. But building on the site is where the challenge comes and the extra engineering. And then also, if we were to build on the site, the, um, it could interfere and create a negative effect on the surrounding properties if, if we start digging and tearing this site that, you know, should be maintained and stabilized. So just wanted to point that out. If there's any questions?
Yep, okay. All right, any other, uh, opponents? Okay, is the staff response?
Well, I do have a response. There's, um, you know, in, in my opinion, there's been quite a bit of new information given. Uh, I would, with that, uh, the second point is the access concerns with Public Works. I would like to at least have them something in writing to you guys, to introduce to you guys with, uh, and ask for this as a continuance to the next meeting because, uh, the third thing is we've also been asked in one of the public comments for, uh, a request for a continuance or to push this on. And I think there's ample reasons for that, for the neighbors to be re-noticed and to have this information as well. But it also gives, uh, Vito a chance also to, to look at this, the new information. And if he has another response, he can, he can respond as well. And we'll put that in the packet.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, this issue will be continued to next month? Do we, the commissioners want to discuss any of this or you just want to wait until?
Well, the last thing I would say is it's just not even close to that information. And I, and I really, having it presented tonight, all of a su, you know, just laid on us, I don't think, but it's not, first of all, there's no public notice that it's meaningful at all because there was not enough information in the original application to engender public views that they're going to use. So right off the bat, there's a problem. And so I just think there's a lot more work that needs to be done, but.
Well, I mean, one of the concerns I have when I'm looking at the site is the spruce tree that's in the middle of the lot. To me, that's sort of, does dictate where the house is going to go because if you're going to try to protect that tree, um, according to the rules that we've been enforcing, you can, you really couldn't build, uh, build there. So that would change the whole equation if they were going to proceed. If they were going to cut that tree down, that means that that would make a difference in how it might look at the setback and that they could build further, further south or further east. So that's a, that's something that I, I'm thinking about.
Right, you're saying that proceeding is if they know that they're going to preserve the tree at this point is.
Right, right.
If you don't have any idea.
Right.
You know, I would, like a lot of towns, Cannon Beach is unrestricted. I think it's important to be, um, aggressive while I'm looking at ways to find and make lots developable. Um, I realize cost isn't included in here, but I do think it's important to try to make, to try to find a path to make it more affordable. That said, I agree with you, Commissioner Kerr. We don't have enough information to know that the surrounding owners are protected from their view, their solar access, their privacy. Those tests are nowhere near that far what we have here tonight. I guess that's just my thoughts on what we're doing.
So if you are going to continue, typically there's a motion with a date certain, so re-noticing doesn't happen. So, you know, I, I believe the next commission meeting is February twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen. The other thing to consider is, I've heard expressed tonight that you don't like the new information being presented to you at your hearing. You might set a deadline for written materials to be submitted so that they can make it into your packet. Um, you know, uh, could be helpful as well, at least a few days beforehand.
And there is no established deadline for this information?
No, uh, the hearing is when, you know, a lot of times what'll happen is that the application comes in, there's a fair amount of information from the applicant, but the public, this is their first chance to, to address it. And so there typically is a fair amount of stuff that comes in at the hearing itself. Um, and that's part of the process. But if you're going to continue, you can kind of shape that a little bit more.
So do we need a, a motion to continue or?
Um.
It's been requested to continue, so.
It's, typically you do get a motion and, and you set a date certain so that people who are, are here know what that is.
And our, our February meeting is on the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to?
I, I know the continue to February twenty-first.
I second.
And the written materials at least a week before?
Be submitted by close of business, February twenty-first.
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Kerr?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Knott?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And our next agenda meeting is a continuation of the consideration of Z O eighteen dash oh-three tree removal ordinance amendment. Uh, Z O eighteen dash oh-three, City of Cannon Beach requests for zoning ordinance text amendments for chapter seventeen dot seventy tree removal. The proposed amendment addresses the protection of trees from unintended damage during construction. The request would be reviewed against the criteria of the municipal code, section seventeen dot eight-six dot oh-seven oh A amendments. Um, okay, so let me straighten my desk. Yep.
Maybe while you're straightening it out, I can give a brief staff, uh, report. But this is the tree protection, tree removal amendments. It's something that you've seen a few times, had hearings. And at the last hearing in December, the planning commission was pretty clear that they wanted to see these changes in context. And so that, that, what you have in front of you is the attempt to, to do that. You know, part of the issue with this, the changes, is that it's making changes to pretty much every zone. And so, you know, to show it in full context would require, you know, the entire zoning code, which, um, was more pages than we really want it, you know, we don't want to overcontext you. And so this was hopefully what you were asking for in terms of really get an idea of what the changes are and how they're spread throughout the zoning code.
And, uh, I also made the clean addition, but then also they highlighted with the strike through, uh, underline for new. One thing I did want to point out, and I think I might have missed from the notes or whatever, is, um, I think you guys had mentioned at some point you wanted to change everything to, um, from radius to diameter to keep one, uh, thing. And so, and I think I caught that or I tried to catch that everywhere, but as I was reading it, there was one, um, I think it was back on the, the page twenty-two, yeah, on number four on the page twenty-two. I did not catch it on that number four. That, I'll have to change that wording to diameter and, and the, uh, measures. Did you see that?
Yeah. So. So on this continuation, do I go through the, uh, public testimony statements or no, we just?
You've already had the public hearing unless you intend to open it back up for public comment.
Yeah, okay. So on, on, on two places here, on, on this page and on this page, um, you have the, on the tree protection zone, um, you have the, uh, T B Z for a six inch caliber tree, the breast height would be twenty-four feet. And so it should be, a twelve inch tree would be twenty-four. Do you see that?
I thought it's, uh, I thought it was six to twenty-four because you're, you're doing the diameter, you have to multiply that, is that it?
The, 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 uh, it was two feet for it, each inch of caliber at breast height. So this would be, this is incorrect. Six inch, a six inch, uh, diameter tree would not have a twenty-four foot.
That's diameter, not radius, right?
That's the diameter.
Diameter.
So.
See, previously it was radius is why I'm saying that.
Well.
Right? You all wanted to change it to diameter for instead of radius. And so you have to double, double, is that's my understanding of it.
Well, there's another place in here which had it correct, but these two, to me, doesn't make any sense.
Well, and, and I agree, it didn't make sense to me either because anytime I've done this in any other community I've worked, we do it by radius because that's how you go from, from that. But you all had mentioned that you wanted everything to diameter, so I had to change all of it. And that's why I said I missed the one back here on the last page. But that's, that is the math. If you do that, everything in this thing is by diameter.
Well, this, yeah.
You guys can make your decision. We, I know how to do it. It's just whichever you're comfortable with, uh, for the public.
I mean, I'm, I'm used to the width of the tree being at, at breast height. And the way it was worded before, we mentioned a twelve inch diameter tree, and we would give that twelve inch diameter tree a protection zone that would be, uh, two feet for every inch caliber. And so this.
For each, for each inch of diameter?
You would have two feet out from that.
For each inch of diameter.
Each inch of the diameter of the tree, of, of the caliber of the tree.
The caliber of the tree.
Right, the, okay. So then you want two feet for each one of those inches.
That's right.
Out radius wise or diameter?
Well, the.
From the center of the tree?
The center from the tree.
From the very center.
Yeah, that's how I've always done it, radius and that's it. And so that's why if I can write it that way, it's the easiest for, I think, most places I've ever worked, that's how they do it.
And you might be saying the same thing because the radius of the tree protection zone is twelve feet out. Now, if you take both sides of it, the diameter of the protection zone is twenty-four feet, twelve feet on each side.
That's what, and that's the way it's written.
Yeah, well.
You want us to write it, is what I'm saying. I can write the radio, I just, just take it back to this.
Yeah, yeah, I would take it back because that would make, that would, that would make sense to me. This doesn't make sense to me. This is.
I have a question. I thought that a, a, a tree that had a six inch diameter was perfectly legitimately removed. You could, you could take down trees that had.
Did too.
Uh, six inches or less?
Yes, that's what we stated.
Six inch, I think, isn't it? Yeah, that's.
But maybe that's not the best example.
It is, I think you're right.
Oh, yeah. That's interesting. Maybe, but just make it an eight inch.
Okay. I'll make it eight inch in that way.
Yeah, yeah.
And then you want sixteen foot radius.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'll just use that same one for every, uh.
Yeah.
If, if it repeats anywhere else.
Does that still come out to two feet for each inch of diameter measuring it from the center of the tree? It's the same thing, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
No?
No. No, it's four times two. If, if, if you're using an eight inch.
Yeah, four times two.
The diameter would be a, a radius of four times two feet.
Are you saying on an eighty, eight inch caliber? That's what we're talking about, eight inch caliber? No, I'm not saying four inch and then times two. I, I was saying eight times two.
Two feet for each inch of diameter?
Inch of caliber, because we don't go to the core of the tree. That's not how it's done, it's by the caliber.
Right, it's not the radius of the tree, it's the diameter of the tree, that's how you get the caliber.
And so we're doing.
Yeah, and that's where it's getting computed, I think.
Yeah, well, that's the reason why people were talking about.
Yeah, and, and now I don't get it at all.
Well, I, you know, let's back into this.
What, how do you want? Yeah, that's it, how do you?
I don't care, someone, someone should just draw me a picture.
Okay, I can do that, yeah.
But I'm not thinking of switching back.
Yeah, no, I agree.
The radius to diameter, I have no idea what you're talking about.
Okay, so.
I'm, I'm.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, uh.
Yeah.
Next time I'll bring a whiteboard. I like the whiteboards. Okay, so this is, this is the tree, okay? And that's the, so then it's going out like this, the tree structure, right? The caliper is usually this distance, right?
Diameter of the tree.
Yeah, yeah, that's, which is the diameter of the tree. The, well, the trunk of the tree, not the diameter of the tree.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I get that.
And so when someone asks everything be in the diameter, I said, well, they're saying this and this then, okay? So when, I just doubled whatever this was in that. So if this is an eight-inch caliper, you guys are wanting then this to be 16 feet, right? That's, that's traditionally how it's done. But that's the radius, okay? So then I was, I just thought you guys were wanting this to say, this needs to be 32 diameter and this is eight.
That's rough, right, 16, 16, 16?
Exactly.
Okay, so I can write it that way.
Yeah, but it's, it's written that way.
But what scares me about that is if, we've looked at this a lot and it, it isn't clear.
We can prove a diagram.
Okay, well, maybe we should because, I mean, if someone's trying to figure out their lot.
I'm a, I'm a big fan of visuals, okay?
Yeah, okay, that would be true.
And is that then, that's for how deep height?
Yes.
Bit sure of it?
Yes.
That's all I was.
DBH. Okay.
So let's deal with another concept here. If we have a tree that's eight feet, eight inches in diameter, and we're going to protect essentially 32 feet for that tree.
For the whole thing.
Yeah. The diameter of the zone's going to be 32 feet. Well, that leaves us 18 feet on that lot in which to build, if the tree is placed conveniently, you know, on a lot. Inconveniently, the lot will be unbuildable. Although we normally say that any tree can be cut within the building structure. And so I think we have, there's a kind of contradiction near within the, within the language of this section.
Yeah, I wasn't, of course, here when you guys wrote this.
I don't know if we were either. Well, I'm just looking, I mean, I, I know that the building code in Cannon Beach says that if a tree is sitting where you want to build a house, you can cut the sucker down.
If it's, yeah, within the footprint, we allow that.
Well, you know, this is in contradiction. This is saying that you've got to protect that tree with a zone.
It's extending the, yeah, it's extending what we would normally protect.
Well, is that what we want to do?
I don't think we want to make all the lots unbuildable.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I, like I said, I wasn't here for this, but my working in other areas, you know, I'm much more of a fan of if, if, we call them legacy trees, certain dimensions, so I don't know what you guys decide on, if it's six inches or above or whatever. But ours were different sizes in different places I've worked. But those types, then if, if they didn't fall within the footprint, which are the automatics that they can take down. But if that, those trees had these TBZ, PZ zones that fall, that could be damaged, or, you know, those radii fall within that area, then you would have an arborist give you recommendation on that. In other words, they have to bring in an arborist to give you recommendations on, you know, if, if it's savable or not and, and measures to save.
Well, why don't we write that? I mean, I think, you know, I, I think it's just.
Well, 1790, the general requirements regulations. I thought that that.
And so that's pretty much it.
Yeah, I, if you look at, I'm looking at the highlighted one, and page 17 of that is where subsection 1770-020D allows, you know, the city shelter, tree removal permit if the application demonstrates that one of the following criteria is met. D says, removal of trees in order to construct a structure development approved or allowed. So that's the, if you're in the building footprint.
Right.
And if you go to page 20 of, again, the highlighted one, this is the additional requirements. And Q, the highlighted part that you added, an application for removal of permit, removal of tree to construct a structure development must include the following in subsection two, measures to be taken to avoid damaging trees not proposed for removal, both on the subject property and off-site. And that's where you would get the arborist's report about the measures to be taken. And perhaps we can make that clear by saying, measures provided by a professional arborist or, or something like that.
Yeah, I think so, that's a good point. Because that does, but you wouldn't know that really just from reading.
Does that make sense or?
Yeah, that makes sense. And also on, on our last meeting, why there was, maybe it was the one before that, where they were putting out a small structure, there's, they were going to build a bridge if they ran into roots that would be damaged, so there are different ways of, of addressing that. In this particular site that we're just been going through, I think the backfill on that is going to be the one that would give concern to any arborist. But, I mean, there are different ways that you could do, you could fill in and have drainage in there that would protect the root system. But, but anyways, that would be something the arborists have to recommend.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think that you're right. If we just add that in there, clarifies that.
How, some, what?
In Q there, it says, an application for tree removal permit under 1770D, just like which requires a city, a certified arborist.
Site staff, measures to be taken. And what did you want to add to that?
Just even in that introductory phrase there, in Q, you could say, under the, under the recommendations of a qualified certi, certified arborist.
So you would put that at the beginning of?
Yeah, an application for tree removal permit under 1770D, under the direction of a certified arborist. And that way you clarify, that's, that, you have to do that under 1770-20D, but this clarifies that you have to do that here. So you don't have to go shopping around for it.
I'm behind on this conversation, but just out of curiosity, how did it begin that the changes were discussed?
Long, long time ago.
I think it, I think it came up where some municipal codes allowed just one foot of protection for one, for the caliber of a tree. We wanted to up it to two. I, I think that's kind of weird.
Kind of why you wanted to make it a little more strict, the tree protection. There was never any, no one ever talked about saying you couldn't build on a lot. I mean, that, that's never been applied in this section. That's why that sort of clinic, that's how we knew where that was coming from. Because I just, I see it, you know.
We said it last time.
Oh, I, I said, this tree ordinance regulation has never said that would make a lot unbuildable. But you can't get anything from trees.
We should be able to say, yeah, it's about seven, eight inches or something.
I mean, you know, radius and gillian, it was not here.
So I guess just that multiplier, you know, going from one to two makes a big difference.
Give it some added protection to the trees, that's why.
Yeah, and I like the language where you allow the arborists to kind of make those tough calls.
So you're going to include a picture and with this little arrow going out? So I'm serious, because if I was making this application and I hadn't been in any of these discussions, I would be sitting there trying to figure out what kind of world we're talking about.
I can, yes. And, you know, I, I can make those changes and come back to you, or you can recommend approval because, you know, I can make, I can do a little diagram just like you did. So you can make an approval, you can recommend approval just on those changes.
But you all want to see the diagram?
I don't need to see the diagram, but.
As long as it looks like it. We can believe his artistic caliber.
Don't use a six-inch diameter. So you're going to make a diagram, two changes on the very first part, and then clarification on, on Q.
Exactly.
So if, if you are interested in, in doing that, you know, I'd, I'd recommend someone make a motion to recommend approval to the city council of the packet of changes that you have in front of you with three additional changes. One is to add a diagram demonstrating how the radius is determined. The change to 17.70030Q that would state that an arborist would identify the measures to be done. And on the, and changing throughout, the tree protection zone would be done in radius as opposed to diameter.
And just, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
From a procedural standpoint, again, being behind on this, I don't feel I'm qualified to vote either way abstaining.
Sure.
What do you mean you don't feel? I don't want to touch. Aren't you up to speed on this?
If that's all it takes, okay.
Okay, is there anyone who would like to make a motion to move this on? All right, to move it on to city council, I mean.
And you can make the motion as stated by the city attorney. You can always say that, that's what I'm going to.
Okay, I'll make a motion to move it on to the city council as stated by the city attorney with the corrections stated by.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Call the room.
Mr. Burke?
Is that a yes?
Yes. Yeah, it's a yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
I'm going to abstain.
Mr. Knopf?
Yes.
Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. Before we go on to the work session, do I get a, a motion from somebody to authorize the chair to sign the appropriate orders?
I still want to.
Is there a second? Roll call.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Kerr?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Knopf?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Our next agenda item is the work session for short-term rental amendments.
He's not leaving.
Yeah, you're on your own.
Is there coffee being served? Coffee going.
Okay, can everybody see that there?
I'm okay.
And.
Absolutely. This has been a while, as, as, like the others. And so I wanted to kind of give you guys some, bring it back almost fresh because it's come, it's sat there for a little while. And so I wanted to kind of briefly touch on kind of the main topics that were, have been discussed throughout this thing, and then bring it back as a work session. And so part of the materials that have been included in the packet are some of the materials from earlier on that Mark had done some great staff reports. I thought they explained it much better than I could explain it. And, and then I also, that attachment A of the current ordinance in there. And so that gives you kind of what we would deal with administratively and how we work with it. Then attachment B is Mark's taking the changes or inputting the changes in the strike throughs and giving a little commentary on that. And then I made my little work session here. And I'd like to kind of at least give you a little history and context, and then look at the current ordinance, the proposed changes in context of that current ordinance, and then other concerns, and then possibly talk again about next steps and how we're going to go forward with this. But I'm going to use a lot of what Marcus has written, and then some of the second levels, some of the things that we, we heard with our discussions and with the short-term rental community, and then also some of the facts around this. So this is, you know, some of that guiding language. I think Mark said that they started regulating these back in the eighties, short-term rentals. And I've tried to do some research on it and look at some of the documentation. But you can even see from that very first thing that the city finds that transient occupancy of dwelling units constitutes a visitor-oriented commercial use in the city's residential areas. And so there's been concerns in the housing comprehensive plan housing policy, number eight, zoning ordinance, section 17. There's, there's been that concern, there's that kind of fine line that seems to always comes in, come up with these discussions. And resort communities that I've worked across the nation on, it is a controversial subject in almost every one. And, and yet it's a vital part of, of these communities. This is just a chart that I took from the web, just showing the growth in, from, you know, the last few years in the different ones in short-term kind of vacation rentals across the nation. This is the national kind of look at the industry and how, how quickly it's grown. This is us, and this is going back to kind of our numbers, right to left, it's pretty flat. We stay around 200 units. And as far as I go back, showing the different ones from the 14-day, five-year lifetime unlimited, it all have really stayed pretty even, for as far as I can track back with our data. We now have what's called Short Term Rental Helper, which is a scraping kind of service that we've contracted with. It goes out there and scrapes from the web. And I might even show you that a little bit, not denied that at some point, maybe I'll actually show you a little bit of that, that tool. But it has, with our first kind of dump for our first break in the run, you know. has, with our first kind of dump for our first break in the run, you know, it's caught, we took in, that's within the department, and I lost handling, but a lot less than we thought we caught, number one, less than, what, five percent, five percentage around that. And yet, with just the few that we caught, about a hundred thousand dollars currently in rental tax, rental.
When you're talking about scraping through the web, do you mean like going on sites like Airbnb, et cetera, and finding out what they're renting and how many of those people are not doing it legally and reporting it?
Yeah, and, you know, I don't know what.
Five percent of what? You've only caught five percent of it?
Say we have two hundred, I'm saying, you know, ten, ten or less.
You found, by using this tool, you found that two hundred people were using Airbnb and all these other things and renting out their places without?
No, we only found about ten or less, is what I'm saying, you know, only a little handful.
Were actually doing it?
That were doing it illegally or without permits.
Cities issued two hundred permits and two hundred people are doing it legally, but less than ten or so are doing it from the scraping service.
And what time of year was that, that you ran that test?
It's doing it all the time. It's, but the first one was done, um, October, November, it should get back.
So off-season.
Hard to believe. I just because, I mean, there are two on my street alone, so I don't know how.
Well, you know, and I think that this, we're going to see how this works for us. We're also going to, we, that's the other, my next thing, is you can see, see how this comes out. It's a mapping type thing that identifies those properties from that, and then we can track those along with, you know, kind of our internal processes. And it, you know, it should be, it should be a useful tool, so we're gonna see how it works, and we've kind of got mixed reviews or internally as well, so we're, we'll keep you updated, and I think that that maybe is a great thing, maybe at the next one I'll give you guys a little presentation of what we've found so far and kind of things of that. But the other thing, we have a new code enforcement official, and that is, you know, I think SDR Helper may be of use, but then another tool is that code enforcement official. And if you go back and you look at the manager's reports, as to where I've been scraping my own data from a lot of this stuff, but if you look back historically, they used to report how many code enforcement actions they did which were terminal violations. We don't do that right now, but now with our code enforcement, we have a meeting tomorrow with our new code enforcement official to talk about exactly this. And in communities I've worked with in the past, that's really what we've caught is to that code enforcement. And you'll, you know, like you said, I think we all know one or two that we suspect, but you have to document that and you have to, because there are people that just let friends share.
Sure, no, I recorded it.
Yeah, okay, yeah, and it's only as strong as that as well. So anyhow, the proposed changes, any questions on that so far, on the history and all that? And if you guys are comfortable with that, when we talk about the next step, maybe we talk about you doing a little presentation on that. Award no more five-year permits and end the five-year permit program by allowing current five-year permits to expire. Number two, change the restriction that allows one occupancy group for fourteen days, the famous fourteen-day rule, to instead allow two occupancy groups per month. And number three, at the owner's option, allow a self-managed short-term rental unit to defer penalties by changing to professional management. So those were the three things that Mark had brought forward from that city council direction, and that's what you have as the changes in here. But he also outlined in his July memo, other concerns, and those zone-based restrictions, density restrictions, geographic restrictions, capital permits, frequency and duration restrictions, alignment with the fire code, I put, and other ordinances, off-street parking, violations of penalties, all kind of what, you know, he talked about as possible amendments, is what he said, other things we may consider. I don't know how or what context this came in his discussion or why he brought these up, but, you know, these are different tools that you can use. Now, if we're looking at our program and that, you know, two hundred units have stayed pretty steady, you know, I don't know until we get more evidence if we need to do any of these, but I did want at least speak to them on what he was talking about. I think one of the things that staff would like to put forward is, I do think that there's some just technical changes or like a unit definition and even this, this is the very first thing, and I think you can also follow along with this when you're, and I'm glad I've got the city attorney because I always like to ask at least one question.
You gotta warn me.
But anyhow, one of my favorite things, it is coming to a new community and looking at your ordinance, is one of my favorite things on this one is seventeen seventy-seven oh three, this thing right here, it says, and this is the guiding kind of quote, "No person shall occupy, use, operate, or manage nor offer or negotiate to use these for rent a dwelling unit in the RVL, RL, R1, R2, R3, MP, and R8M zones for short-term rental occupancy except," right? And so it's saying in all those districts, you can't operate, manage, or do any kind of short-term rentals in these residential districts, right? And then it says "except" a dwelling for which there is a short-term rental permit, so there it's saying except with one of our permits, right? But okay, let's just say any of those other districts right there, say if I had a C1 and I have an apartment in the C1.
Which color is C1?
C1 is that big red one, okay? That's a commercial district. Or in the OSR, in an open space, if I happen to have a little cottage or something, can I rent it?
You can't rent it pursuant to the short-term rental permit. So, you know, this was designed to deal with short-term rentals in residential zones. In commercial zones, short-term rentals are allowed as a hotel, as some other types of uses. I didn't go back and look, so, you know, I think open space, the idea is we don't want short-term rentals in open space areas, we don't want residential, we want open space. So you're not gonna have a permit there. So this program is really about how do you manage short-term rentals in residential zones? Short-term rentals in commercial zones, that's governed by the zoning and could be allowed through a hotel, through a boarding house, whatever is in that, those commercial zones. So this is really focused in the residential areas.
See, that's exactly, and so, and he speaks to you, one of the other points that we talked to, or I brought up with Bill earlier, is, and we said in our first guiding language slide that I had about commercial and residential, right? And so often, you know, across the country, some areas are going to where they see use as commercial uses, and so they should be kind of held more to commercial standards and anything that there should come in. So that's one of the topics, but how areas often do this, and like we did, from just what Bill said, we limited to just residential zones. Well, you can do that even further by just saying only these residential zones. So it's often been said, well, maybe we shouldn't allow these in R1, okay? Now, the state of Oregon is going further in R1 and what they're allowing in R1s, and so we may see some things changing on that front soon. But that's a way to do it, by zone-based restrictions. And some districts do this by overlays, right? So you do an overlay zone for where you allow short-term rental. And so you just say anywhere within the short-term rental overlay zone, and you can put that pretty much anywhere in spots around the city, okay? That's another.
I have a question of the motion between residential versus commercial. Why is it that a long-term rental, thirty days or more, isn't considered commercial?
I mean, it's a somewhat arbitrary line, but for our purposes in the state of Oregon, the state has adopted a residential landlord-tenant act that governs leases for over thirty days that we have no authority to change. And so, you know, basically, it allows for thirty-day rentals regardless, you know, and the basic idea is that there's a lot of people lease month-to-month, that's what most apartments, even home leases tend to be month-to-month, and it's not really vacation month, you know, sometimes you get some vacation people that stay for a month, but that's typically much more akin to, you know, somebody living there, you know, that's, but that, you know, essentially, month-to-month tenancies are the classic rental lease periods.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that that's what I've always been told, it comes out of that use language, and that a lot of our zoning language is out of use, so it's seen as a residential use. So I think that's how I've always been told that's why it's not.
It's an interesting point you bring up because I think it does, it may address a larger question we should consider as a body. I did a little research as much as I could before the meeting. The Oregon Building Code, I think they use the word transient, that's for under thirty days, and if your use is considered transient, you, from what I could tell, and I would defer to you on this, is it looked like if you are classified as transient, it would categorize your building as a commercial structure, which could open up a number of questions relative to the standard this city holds a residential structure to versus a commercial. I don't know if that's a huge can of worms, but I think if we are gonna sanction, I guess, we should at least have a conversation around that.
And I know that issue has come up, and at the same time, a number of, you know, a wide variety of jurisdictions, Portland, Hood River, Cannon Beach, Manzanita, you know, Ashland, up and down, you know, have short-term rentals and do not require compliance with the commercial building code, instead the residential building code. And I haven't looked into why that is. I think, and this is a guess here, that the building code doesn't concern itself with use as much as it concerned itself with design. You know, what is this designed for? And to a building code, you know, it's really about the building the code, you know, building it, and it is designed for use for a single family, and that's what it governs. And it doesn't, you know, doesn't really make that distinction of, well, it's a single-family home, but it's gonna be used short-term. And, you know, like I said, I haven't dug into it for certain, but that's my first impression of why they're not designed for commercial. And there'd be significant differences because of ADA requirements and other things that would really change the design of a residential home and make residential homes much more expensive and to retrofit for that type of use.
Yeah, I get the cost and certainly, you know, wanna make sure we've got housing, I just, I'm concerned for the city, making sure that we're not seen as sanctioning something, someone has an ADA suit or, God forbid, is hurt in some way.
Sure.
And we had an inspector go through the house, and he said it was still residential standard, and their attorney says, no, you should have been going to a commercial, which would be a nightmare. And I did do a little bit of research on how cities are looking at it, New York, Portland does allow it, San Francisco, New York have shut down the short-term. So I think it's something that maybe in nineteen eighty wasn't as closely looked at just because today it's happening so much more with technology and in the world we live in, I just think it's very important that we.
Yeah, and I think, you know, what has really changed is a lot of areas that weren't, residential areas in big cities, you know, like Cannon Beach and resort areas have had the short-term rental of residential because you don't have the facilities that, you know, hotel facilities, other, you know, that big cities have. And that's why the pressure really started with smaller resort areas like Cannon Beach, you know, and, you know, and maybe it is time we look at that idea and see what we wanna do. But the, go ahead.
Well, something we don't think about either is people who just rent a room. You know, a lot of places you can rent a bedroom in a house.
And, you know, the boarding, the classic example of a boarding house, again, if it's month-to-month, then that's fine, if it's day-to-day, that either is gonna have to be done through a short-term rental permit or in a commercial zone.
And that's, I'm glad you brought that up, Bill, because that is one of mine, I mentioned clarification of some things. I would be, I would like clarification for us to at least put a language in there that states that it's the entire unit or whatever, if that's the way you guys have seen that, or that's the way you've read this ordinance in the past, and that's the way it's been formed, and that's the way you want it. Because I agree, a lot of the now Airbnbs and stuff, it's just a single room, and you'll see in most communities that deal with this all the time, they have pretty good definitions of what a unit is. Some call them two or three different things depending on, you know, if it's just a single room, or if it's got the shared access or whatever, but defining that down to what needs to be included in that and everything within the definition.
Just to take one more step back, again, being a newbie, what prompted the look again at this? Was it around people renting out their houses without permits, or was there something else that drove it?
It's more of the fourteen-day, the administrative, I think.
No, no, this was, this stemmed originally from a buzz around town in this building that we've got to do something about housing because people can't find houses, and, well, maybe we ought to look at short-term housing here as a suppressant of available housing.
Taking away.
Yeah, if we get rid of short-term housing, then we'll open up more housing.
Okay, so that was kind of the discussion. Yeah, because when I came and wore, you know, those three, first three points, what was remaining concerned, so.
Well, I know that's a national conversation as well, especially Portland, the housing stock, and one I've heard multiple times in Cannon Beach.
Yeah, it was a national, it was becoming a national concern, and I think Cannon Beach officials talking about this and the city council, you know, talking about this problem and what to do about it, and I think it was a work committee set up to deal with it as well, and it came down to, well, one thing we could do is, you know, stop on it, short-term rentals or something like that.
So the way this is structured, then, the number of permits would be not only narrowed down from, in terms of scope, but potentially even the fourteen, the two times a month could be reduced to number also, that kind of idea on it?
That's not what the recommendation from, or what the city councils asked the planning commission to do. That might have been part of the discussion, but what the city council asked the planning commission to look at were changes to deal with three pretty discreet areas, and it doesn't include, you know, narrowing down the number of permits.
Yeah, and so these other suggestions would be something we would start working on for something for a future, not for this, the three years.
Well, they're talking about narrowing down the number of.
Unlimited, yeah, those go away, but it doesn't change the availability of the fourteen, you know, twice a day, so, yeah, the unlimited goes away.
Well, some people have those.
Five.
Short-term, not for five years, forever.
Yeah.
Those start reducing under this.
You can't renew them.
Yeah.
Once they're gone or sold, once they pass on or sell it, it's over, yeah.
So, yeah, those are, and so, these are just other possible amendments for future discussion. Like I said, with just us, or the data we have, we don't show that it's growing, we have no evidence of that, you know, and that's why with the code enforcement, with the SDR Helper, and with us starting to now look at these things and take them seriously, you know, my background's a lot of long-range planning, so I do go to the land studies and all that stuff, I'm very GIS kind of savvy, so I will be doing a lot of research on this over the next year, and we will start looking at these. And the reason.
And, and the reason that we don't have this data is because we've never really looked for it, right? I mean, you're saying that it looks like it's flat, that it's, you know, the same amount all the time, but I think that there's other kind of evidence from talking to people that would suggest otherwise and from just my own, all of our observations. So what I'm saying is that just that no one's really made an effort to collect the data, not that it, that we know for sure that that data has any validity.
Well, we are starting to do that. And so we're starting to collect that data. We found, like I said, a few already and, you know, over a hundred thousand dollars worth of tax, you know, that we dealt with and, and we'll find more. And, and that's part of us looking at in that, looking at the code enforcement and to find better ways of identifying this.
Also, I think that, you know, the fourteen-day rental, I think, you know, anybody can do that.
Right.
Yes.
And I think that's where there's been expansion.
Well, there hasn't, is what I've been trying, you know, I can show you that data. There hasn't been an expansion for fourteen days. There it is right there. That's just the last four years, but I've looked back and the numbers haven't changed that much, you know, from.
But I, but I think there's a lot of non-permitted fourteen-day rentals.
Well, what we're saying, that's speaking to what Lisa is saying, that we believe or there's a perception that there's that, okay? But we've gotta find evidence, I believe, to hear if we're gonna really start looking to change. And so anyhow, we will do that. And so some of the other ways you may do this is through density restrictions, okay? So you could do it by zoning, overlay, kind of restrictions on areas. You could also do it by density requirements. And this is from our subdivision ordinance. So in certain, you know, we say a certain number of dwellings, well, some, some areas of the country do it by, they only allow so many permits per area of their city or whatever. And Seaside does it by a very unique kind of way where I think Seaside's restriction, as Mark says, Seaside requires a planning commission hearing to approve a short-term rental permit. More than one out of five nearby dwellings is already used for a short-term rental. So there are communities that, okay, if you were here and your neighbor had one and their neighbor had one, that means that you can't have one. So it looks at the surrounding area and then permits only so many in that area.
What about care parties?
No, we don't have a care party.
They don't have short-term.
Oh, yeah, well, you know, there's plenty of them. There's plenty that don't permit it, but they do it, right? And then geographic restrictions like, you know, I think Mark mentions, it's been mentioned that we shouldn't allow them east of Highway one oh one. And so there's a ways to do that by just simply saying they're geographic. Like I said, certain areas do it by a different method called caping, you know? So we will only allow twenty percent of our housing to be in short-term rental. And so Manzanita capes here at seven two point five percent. If you look at our numbers, we're at about ten percent right now. And so if you look at Manzanita, they're almost double, allowing almost double.
You're saying that ten percent of homes in Cannon Beach are short-term rentals?
Yeah, of housing.
Have permits, they don't necessarily all rent. You know, some people do it more than others.
I've, I've worked in jurisdictions that had almost seventy percent, you know, they're ghost towns and, you know, don't wanna see that. And so.
I just, I just, it just seems really low to me. And, you know, it's, I mean, not, I mean, I'm saying I don't think it's low myself.
But short-term rental permits, you know, like my neighbors where I live, I, I would say that the, you know, a third of them are not, they don't rent short-term rentals, they just come down on weekends and use the house, you know? That's, that's the majority that surround me. And, and so I think there's plenty of those that sit vacant almost two weeks without.
There are plenty that sit vacant all year long.
Yeah. Okay, so frequency and duration. We know about the fourteen-day permanent occupancy requirement as well. You could change that frequency and duration. The way our current one works, just to explain, as, as explained to me today. I, I need to be explained by every time I look at this thing, okay? So if that's your month right there, right, one through thirty-one, and I rent mine for the fifth through the seventh, okay, when can I rent it next?
Hundred thirty days.
Our current, under our current.
The seventeenth. I can rent it on the seventeenth, anytime during that timeframe. But you know what I didn't understand until today? I can't re-rent that thing until the second of the next month. That's why this thing gets shorter because of this kind of delayed action, okay? And so that's one of the changes in here is that they're wanting to change that to where you can, two times, pretty much two times a month is what you're trying to say. And so, you know, because what happens if you go back to that, you, at one of these months, usually probably twice a year, I would say, is you're cutting yourself one short. You're gonna end up only being able to rent it once that month because of this kind of push. So they, they can speak to this much better than I, the short-term rental community. Okay? So, so alignment with fire code, okay? So you guys spoke a little bit, Clay brought it up, about alignment with the commercial fire code. Well, our building code said that anything with eleven or more should require some, okay? You can see on that chart, those are, the green ones are ten or eleven occupancy, sleeping occupancy, and then the blue ones are twelve or above, okay? And there shouldn't be twelve or above as you're reading orders, right? But you can see there's quite a few. That's not all Cannon Beach, that's just a little picture of it. But, you know, there's quite a few around and that's our short-term rental. So I said, and other ordinances, because let's think about this. We ask our parking, the off-street parking requirements, which are there in your ordinance, you can see, there's a chart on there, right? And it says, off-street parking is required as specified below. Occupancy is limited by the number of bedrooms and by the number of available off-street parking spaces as specified as follows on the table. One-bedroom and two-bedroom require two off-street parking spaces, okay? And an off-street parking space says that it has to be nine by eighteen wholly on the property, okay? And so when I say alignment with our ordinances, what's our front yard setback? Fifteen, almost across the board, pretty much. What, why does that make a difference? Okay, what are, where is the, where's the property line? Do you guys know? See these things? That's right-of-way, okay? These things right here, all this stuff, that's our property. That's the city, right? A lot of people interpret the right-of-way as this street. That's just the travel path. The right-of-way goes to most places way back here. People have walls built here, they have, kind of the legal parking area, they put no parking and pylons out there. That's our right-of-way. They're taking our space, which you should be able to park and use things, but they can't include that in their off-street parking. And they're supposed to have every short-term rental supplied to off-street parking. So if you look at this, see that white line going across the front of those? You see that right in front, right along the, that? There's, there's so many of our, I, I'd like, I'll probably do numbers because like I said, I'm a GIS kind of geek. So I will do some calculations of how many of ours are really non-conforming properties on the front yard setback. But if we're only requiring fifteen feet, yet we say we require eighteen feet for off-street parking, those, all those that say, well, we, they, we have two right in front of our garage or right in front of our house, no you don't because you're supposed to have eighteen feet on the property. And so we don't think about how these things work together or don't work together in, in a lot of this terminology, but here's another street, I don't wanna just pick on one street, but you can see, you know, these, back here, you know, see these, these are the right-of-ways.
But on, on, if you have fifteen-foot setback, you, you can have nine-foot wide, eighteen-foot long.
Where do you have that?
Well, in a parallel to, to the front of the house.
Oh, you could have one, yeah. But I'm just saying, most people will draw that and say they have, they, and see here, I'll give you a little example here. This is, and I, and I use one from the metro area, so no one points fingers at me. So, you know, if this is that fifteen-foot, say, you know, there's a car, for instance, you know, so that's what I was saying, if this is fifteen feet, they're gonna be back out here in our right-of-way if they're trying to get two parking spaces in front of that house.
How many feet is the right-of-way?
We get that quite a bit. Right-of-ways range, depends on where, they can go from, you know, they can, I've worked in places where there are hundred-foot right-of-ways. We don't have quite that many.
Still, I think in Cannon Beach, there's a huge range of right-of-ways.
There's a range of right-of-ways, yes. And so, you know, because we were talking about some are, you know, little twenty, some odd footages and then, then we have the more, more. So, but I, I just wanna bring that up because off-street parking is one of those concerns that I have as an administrator because I really think if we held short-term rentals to the true, the house written in the code, we would, if you wanted to limit short-term rentals, that could be your first step. We start really applying that to people that can't meet that requirement. So violations and penalties, this was brought up with Bill earlier. Currently, we don't really, if someone violates our ordinance or whatever, there is not a, in other words, there's no kind of a window or frame, they can come right back and reapply. And I, I think that there's, part of that penalty should be that they have to wait a time period. And so we put a, a lot of ordinances written this way, and so I just borrowed one from another one. And so that's, that's an example of, I think, something that could be changed on a ordinance, along with like the definition of unit, that I would like to see in the next round of these kind of things. So those were kind of the main topics I wanted to talk about, but I also wanted you guys to have an opportunity to kind of respond to the three changes, primarily the three changes, but then any other things that you guys might want to talk about in short-term rentals in the future and those kind of next steps going forward. I'll turn that off. And so I, I'd like to at least kind of start with those as it's written now with the, which is attachment B, I think, is what Mark had.
You know, on the other side, I was thinking about the, the shorter permit. It seems to me a shorter term would be the renewal or when, when they were issued so that the people whose businesses these were, were not, were able to forecast for whether they would have or they wouldn't have that business and could book accordingly?
Yeah, I think, wasn't that written into his, the proposed changes, allowing those kind of?
I saw something about the existing, giving some runway, some, some time to those people who have five-year or unlimited in the, in the current program. I don't remember, and I guess that would've been the fourteen also, but I don't remember seeing it for, for the future, an address of when those permits are issued and some sort of process for people to understand if they were gonna get the permit again or it was just one, one year at a time. It seems like it'd be really hard on a business.
Yeah.
If you didn't, if you couldn't forecast for, for your future, especially the busy season.
Good point.
Well, it says in here that fourteen, fourteen-year definition, you're giving that, those people years notice.
And is that all?
It's in, it's in.
You're giving the people who currently have that?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm thinking about the, the new permit.
Yeah.
Well, we're not gonna have.
The renewal, yeah.
Yes, because you'd want.
Well, not four to six days.
But.
At least that.
You're entitled to the fourteen-day period. It's not a, it's not capped and there's, you know, it's renewed, but there's no real reason to deny it at the, at the moment. So, you know.
The person then, the person who is renting then would assume that they will get the next year's renewal? Is that what you're stating?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not capping that or phasing that out, you know, except for that one transition.
Basically, if you apply for fourteen-day rental, you get it.
Yeah.
Thirty, you know, whatever you call that, limited.
Monthly limited.
Monthly limited is a new terminology.
Yeah. So that's why there's that kind of one-time window thing, but yeah, I think that's, it's, you're, you don't, you don't get denied.
I'm just kind of thinking through that a little bit, okay?
Maybe it should say, maybe it should say that. Does it say that anywhere? If you have a thirteen-day random permit, you can, on that, do you get renewed if you choose to?
It, it essentially says, you know, if you come in for a permit, there's no restrictions that prevent you from getting it. So it doesn't say you assume it, but anybody who applies gets it.
No. As long as you apply, you know you're gonna have it for the next year.
Yeah.
I might've gotten behind my mind, was still chewing on something else. Anybody who applies for this permit is going to get it?
Yeah, for the, for this fourteen or monthly, whichever one you wanna call it. Fourteen-day is what it's currently called. We're changing that to allow two, you can rent it twice in a month without that kind of delay thing.
Not everybody's guaranteed to have to pass an inspection.
Right.
But the renewals are guaranteed.
But it's not limited by a number or.
There's no cap on them.
No caps, yeah. A lot of those ideas I threw out there were if we, after analyzing and we see that the numbers are rising and stuff, these are kind of the options we have going forward where we can limit these if we want.
Okay.
You know, I think the discussion, you know, I don't think I really covered too much the professional management, okay? And I think that that was brought up with the working group and then, you know, I, I got a, a feeling from Mark as well that, you know, he didn't, didn't know if that was really necessary, if, if this professional management, you know, to limit everyone to have to have a professional manager as part of, to rent short-term rentals.
I think that's very important to keep in, to have professional management.
Okay.
Yeah, because otherwise, if, if something is going on in a house, for example, on your street and there's no, and the landlord is living across the country.
Well, that, I do think that, yeah.
There's a requirement that you have to have.
Yeah, there's a requirement for that, but not to require someone to have to have a professional.
So you can just have your neighbor be in charge?
Yeah, as long as you have a responsible, or someone within, and that could be defined possibly better, I think. We, right now, Jill, what is the current, would you know, for the local rep? Yeah, here it is. Must be authorized by the owner of the dwelling.
While he looks at that, just to touch, the professional management was done because almost all the violations that have occurred in, in permit are the self-managed. You know, the professional violators know, the professional managers know the rules, they follow them, they get it done. It's the, the, you know, people who live in Seattle and rent out and just don't know the rules and don't, you know, pay their taxes on time and.
Yeah, no, no, I, I agree with you, I think professional management is a great idea just because it ensures. just because it ensures certain things, like, um, you know, I just think the professional managers are, are more careful about, um, oh, I, I just like some of that noise.
It's their business.
Noise, or, or light pollution, or all those things, you know, they're, they're, they seem to be very responsible about that, because they don't want to mess up their reputation. They don't want the community angry at them, and they, they want to do their job well.
And so, if, if I were to own a house, this is also maybe for Bill, so if I were to own a house, and I wanted to rent it, and so I went and got me a business license and called myself Southern Boys Rentals, uh, would that be under this professional management? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I, I do, and I don't know the answer to that. That's a good question, that I don't know if we define professional management, um.
Yeah, so I, I think maybe, I, I would, I have to think that through, because I, I've never worked in jurisdiction that requires professional management.
And, and to be clear, we're not requiring it, but it's a way to defer penalties.
Oh, that's exactly, very good point.
Right, right. I agree with that, yeah.
Yeah, so the other thing I, you all asked, the property owner should designate a local representative who permanently resides within the Cannon Beach urban growth boundary, or a licensed professional manager. So you have to have someone who lives here, and we know that probably half of our staff at the city, we don't live here. I mean, there's a lot of people that don't live here, but work here, can get here within a 24-hour, or a 12-hour, or two-hour, or whatever. So, I, I think that those kind of things are the things I like to see, if we're going to do this, have that spelled out pretty succinctly, you know, do we, you know, do all of our professional managers live in the city? You know, we ask that they have professional management, but are we going to ask the same thing of everyone? Let's make that.
Doesn't seem to be an issue for professional managers, according to the law.
Yeah.
And, and the, the changes, if you look at page two of Exhibit B, does define what professional management means. It's, for purpose, this chapter means management of a short-term rental unit by a licensed property management company holding a Cannon Beach business license engaged primarily in the business of managing rental property, with a physical office in Cannon Beach or within the distance specified in 17.77. And, you know, um, Country Boy Rentals, or Good Old Boy Rentals, you know, Southern Boy, sorry. Um, you know, we can look at that and make, fine-tune that language, and make sure we avoid that issue. Managing at least five units, or?
Because if you looked at that, it says, and with a physically staffed office within 10 vehicular miles of the Cannon Beach urban growth boundary.
So as we talk about various ways that rentals can be suppressed, are we, are we putting ourselves out there for possible lawsuits under illegal taking?
So, when Cannon Beach initially regulated short-term rentals back in the 80s, that was a question that came up, and it was decided by the Oregon Supreme Court in the case of Cope versus Cannon Beach, that no, you're not taking something, it's not a taking. So that, that isn't a concern unless Oregon Supreme Court wants to revisit that, and they certainly have seen no, no indication, and given the current Supreme Court, I'd be really surprised if they would. Uh, but I do want to be clear also, you know, and I think Jeff went through the background discussion to sort of give you the flavor of what was given to the city council, and what was discussed there, and it's definitely important for you to, to remember, the project that the city council has asked you to do is, is really focused on the three specific things, and maybe you want to put together a report to go along with it, that you ought to consider this, or, or something, but, you know, in terms of, of using some of those approaches that, that Jeff talked about to suppress short-term rentals, is not part of the task that's part of this, and, um, so, you know, it, that doesn't mean you don't, don't talk about it, it's not something that's important, those policies are important to you and, and doing it right, but, you know, in terms of the task, it's a little more limited in, in what, what's being provided to you.
So what kind of pushback has the city council gotten in various discussions, people locals?
There had, this hasn't been before them yet. So they're, they're asking you guys to look at these three things and bring it to them. And I brought those other things up because it's been talked about as a concern, and I said, I brought them up so that you know that we're going to be looking at these and trying to get data on if there is a concern. You know, I think you hear the anecdotal, you hear what neighbors say, so there's measures out there, that's why I presented them, that we can get to those things in the future. But right now, you know, these are the three things before you, and this is what they're wanting you to.
I think that all three of these measures, as far as I'm concerned, they're all very well thought out, and they are all, I, I would.
Move forward, yeah, bring them back for a public hearing. Okay. Any, anybody else, will need anything else on these, you know?
I, I guess, I just remember the, when short-term rentals were limited, and the system that's currently in place, and, and there was a lot of controversy about that.
Sure.
And, um.
Come on.
Well, there was a sense that, you know, this was a kind of permanent solution. And, um, I don't, you know, I don't know what the buzz, I don't rent property, so I don't know what the buzz is, well, really.
Well, from, from our sense, uh, is that it's, you know, I've been here a very short time, but I do not, we don't get daily complaints about violations, we don't, we don't see the numbers rising, so until I have better data, and I'm a data guy, that is all I'm concerned with, I'm going to get you data over the next year, and, and so I, I want to stop the kind of anecdotal stuff, because all that does is, like you said, well, you know, I live here too, and I think you can at least, you know, have a little bit of faith in that as well, because I want to see that this is reported correctly, and that we're getting the numbers, and I'm, I'm interested in, in looking at that. So, we're going to keep an eye on these things, and so I, I don't want us to just say, you know, this is what we heard from so-and-so, and this is the problem, and, you know, to be fair to our, like I said, our, our property management folks that do a good job with this, I think that's why I don't really, as an administrator, and I, believe you me, I've worked in areas where I deal daily with these complaints and these problems, I have not had that here, yet, no problem. I mean, there's parking issues and things like that, but, you know, that's anywhere I go, there's parking issues.
And the only, the only thing that I, only, of these three options, or these three additions or changes to the ordinance, the only thing, I mean, I think it's very generous to allow them to defer penalties by changing professional management. When I first saw it, I thought, too generous, that was my first thought, penalties should be stricter. I think it really, that's, is my initial reaction, but, you know, thinking it through a little more, I guess, in the long run, rather than punishing people by incentivizing them to do something that works better for the whole community, is not such a bad idea.
Actually, it may work better for them too, because my sense is that the professional management people are filling those places up every, every day, especially those who ride along the beach. And that's from personal experience.
Well, there's only two, like, two different occupancy groups per month, even if you're on the beach, that's something.
Well, if you have a short-term though.
Right.
They can run people through constantly.
No.
Yeah.
Only if they have them unlimited.
Yeah, well, the 92, or whatever there are out there.
Right, but those are going to fade out, and then they'll be none left. And how many years that's going to take, but, since they've already been awarded them, I don't see how you can rip them away from people who've been asked.
That's not part of the task in front of you. There are some amortization approaches, but, you know, that's.
So, I mean, I'm just saying, I don't think that, I think they're going to, they're going to, I'm really happy.
Any, anyone else have any thoughts on the three changes?
Well, I guess I didn't understand that those changes would ultimately take away a limit on the number of permits that were out there, and that there could be, I'm, I'm just not getting this, I guess.
So there are, there are no limits now, on the number of 14-day or monthly limited?
There are no limits on the 14-day currently, okay.
Right, and there won't be any limits in the future, so the limits?
What was capped at 90? What?
That's the lifetime.
Those are the ones that our grandfather did, okay, got it.
And that was capped.
Someone wants a 14-day, as many people as want can come get that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's been the demand for those?
Well, it's been flat, the.
Flat.
That's the chart you showed.
Yeah, the yellow line at the top, that was with most.
I mean, we've come, it looked like to me, when I look back through the data for the 15 years, 10 years, whatever it is, uh, you know, it's, doesn't range over 10 up and down for a year, that's not a.
And, and in your research, have you, have you actually looked very closely at Airbnb and how they rent and how?
That's what that STR helper does.
Are they reporting to you, are they reporting to the city?
STR helper reports every month to us, and that's what they're going to be doing. Now, we, like I said, internally, we have some concerns, so we're going to be working with them as well to make sure they're doing this, and that they're fine and stuff. And, you know, I've worked in places where we didn't have the luxury of having STR helper, which is a little bit to pay a month, and we did the old-fashioned way quarterly, where we just went and did the thing, and it's still, I think we will do that internally, just to gauge if we're catching anything. So it can be done in just sampling, and, and trying that, so, you know, we'll try different methods, but we have that code enforcement official as well, that will be tracking a lot, a lot of things.
So if, if, if some of the citizens felt like they were noticing maybe four different families in a short-term rental on their street, and they knew it wasn't a lifetime rental.
Yeah.
They could report to the code enforcement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not to, not to you anymore, but to the actual code enforcement.
Right. Yeah, and we.
You used to refer to Mark Barnes, you know, you have to.
Yeah, and we can make a map that we update monthly, and have it online for people to see, if they, they've got questions, if their neighbor has a short-term rental, we can post that and make and check that.
All right.
It's there online, it's, the list of short-term rentals.
But, I mean, do we do it monthly?
It's, it's updated every time there's a change to the permit, so every permit that is issued, whatever kind it is, is posted on a list online. So you can go and look at your.
And so we can do a better job of letting people know this, that as well.
Yeah, it seems like it brings some people who were out of compliance, a grand opportunity to, to come play by the rules. It also seems, if, if we're going to give people a chance to succeed at this, that parking issue, as you said earlier, is, I, I drive around, that there's not too many houses that are going to comply with that. If you strictly enforce it, and now we've got an officer in place.
Yeah.
If we want to do this right, we, we got to give them a chance to succeed, and it isn't, the way it's set up now, will not.
So is this the end of the work session?
Yeah, and so, yeah, and so what, the, the direction I would like is, I would like to bring this back in this form to you guys for your recommendation at the next hearing, and then we move forward.
So do you, you want to make a motion, or what?
Oh, no, no, this is a work session, I'm just saying, if, if this looks good to you guys, I'm ready to go, and we'll bring it back and get it. And that, that gives the public, they, they've been waiting a long time to have some public comments, and we'll learn more from that, if we need to make adjustments after.
Oh, sure, we will.
It would be helpful for me to get a link to your presentation.
Oh, yeah, I will give that to everyone, and it should, we'll put it up on our website.
Okay, and then I would also like to see a demonstration of the STR.
Okay, I can do that next one as well.
I'd like the chance to send you some red-line changes, I mean, there's some small details in here that I don't think we need to go over, you know, in a work session, and take everybody's time with, but just, you know, there's some references to code that is not the right, you know.
Yeah, like technical changes that.
Technical changes, that I think should be made in this. I also think, Bill, that this document references the Oregon Building Code, we should be maybe a little more clear about what section of that code, it, it can be divided commercially or residentially, and that, that area we should, I think, as a city, be careful to navigate.
And one of the things that I had mentioned to, or hadn't mentioned, Mark, I wrote down to talk, you're not Mark anymore, uh, that I wrote down to talk to, to Jeff, was, um, there are provisions, this, the building code is administered straight, statewide, I, I think, um, we use C-Sides Building Official, and, you know, that, um, I won't, but, there is an opportunity to get an interpretation from DCBS, the Department of Consumer and Business Services, about how building codes apply to different things, and that might be something we think about exploring, and see whether or not that's actually happened before, and, and how the state administers building code, because it is uniform statewide, and, you know, the building code is going to say what it says, and regardless of what we do, you know, that's, that's how the building code gets applied, and so there might be an answer already out there, or if not, there might be an opportunity to get that answer.
Yeah, it'd be great to follow the precedent on that.
Okay. All right, anything else? Okay, um, then we will continue this next month.
So it's a work session, so it's not a continuance, it's, next time it'll be scheduled for a public hearing at the February meeting.
Yeah. Okay, then moving along here, does anybody have any information, I mean, anything they want to share about the tree report? Okay, um, anybody want, have anything to say about the good of the order?
The last meeting, I, I suggested that we try to set the calendar for the year, and so we wouldn't have cancellations, and, you know, we could think about the calendar in terms of major holidays right now, and, and just schedule that, so the public knows, and we know.
Would, I, I would, would you all like to do that at next month, and I also, I would like to, next month, look at kind of the main topics, or just show you guys kind of where I'm projecting what we're going to be trying to get to as a work.
Program.
Yeah. Next month, I mean, this year?
Yeah, because, yeah, I, I want to look at the calendar, but, yeah, we can take that up next month.
Okay, I'll bring the calendar, and then I'll show kind of what I was thinking, these are, these are the main topics that have been brought up, and where I see us maybe looking at these. Okay, if there's nothing more, we're adjourned.
Some of our professional management folks may well know, sort of, residential code.
You know, they come back.
I can't believe it hasn't been asked, because it has been an issue.
Well, thank you, Bill.
No, no problem.
And I'll get you something.